Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisor meeting for Tuesday, December nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. And with me today, I have Don Schwanger, Dean Flagel, myself, Mike Stein, this are your county supervisors. We have Lisa here, our county auditor, Bea Orange, our IP guy, and Luanne is our executive assistant in the background. We have Mary here from the press. First on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Keeney, our director of county engineer. Good morning.
Morning. All right, so a couple of things here, the one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue Bridge Replacement Project to approve the final plans and sign them, so we can go to letting. Are you?
Done with the final plan, huh?
Quite a bit, quite a bit, but there's a span about a grading is going to be done. You guys familiar with the bridge here, south west of town, basically?
I'm not really familiar.
Well, it's a, it's a two-span, I think it's eighty, eighty-two feet by twenty feet wide. Uh, there's like a timber, it's not really retaining wall, it's more like a long, uh, wing wall that runs parallel with the road, so there's on the east side, it's quite a bit of drive off, so that when this is done, there won't be any retaining walls required, so this is a hundred and ten foot slab, so.
What you expected?
Yeah. Yes, let's see what it costs, but.
I have a motion and a second to approve the one hundred and eighty-fourth Avenue Bridge Design as presented. All those in favor, as well for letting them too?
Yeah, and let's do it in March, but let's bid March.
All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Yep. Okay, uh, the next one is, uh, same situation where we're gonna approve, uh, final plans for, uh, asphalt preventive maintenance work, fog seal work on, uh, Z fifteen going, uh, north out of Springbrook Highway, seven fifty-two. So this is probably something new for you guys, but.
It is, so is that the same type of thing you did on the Goose Lake, I compressed highway that we talked about?
Yes.
So how old is that, that overlay, not very old?
No, so you wanted, the sweet spot is to do it from anywhere from about one to four years. You want to do usually one to three, get the original fog seal on there, and then we'll re- reseal it again, probably about every five or six years, we'll do it a second time, possibly a third time, depending on the condition, otherwise we'll be do a, a more, uh, what I would call a, a, preventative maintenance type sits down the performance curve a little bit more, something like, uh, like a slurry seal or slurry level or something like that. If the pavement's still in good shape, PCI say greater than eighty, you'd still be doing fog seal. You'd crack fill, fog seal, that's how you, you keep the surface of the pavement in good condition.
How come we never heard of it before?
Probably just didn't, didn't catch on, I don't know.
We've always done it, though, I don't remember seeing, you know, road seal like that one by Diamond Blinn County from Goose Lake Press.
Yeah, so it used to be, um, even the DOT, uh, it was hard to get this stuff or using our foreign market funds, so if you were gonna do this work, you'd have to do it through local funds. Well, the estimate for this job's a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, so it'd be very hard to spin this project through our local funds. But now, over time, I've kind of gotten the DOT to allow us to use FM funds, well, that opens up, you know, one point whatever, three million dollars of funding, so it gives us, and we can borrow ahead, so it gives us a big pot of money, because pavement preservation has now become more and more mainstream. You know, people know that you gotta do this, you gotta do preventative maintenance, you can't just do it and then let it sit for twenty-five years and then spend, you know, four hundred thousand dollars a mile to redo it, so.
So just for the people watching, this is kind of the next level thing to what they did in the parking lot across the street to go through cleaning, and it kind of just keeps the moisture out of the cracks.
Yeah, so the, I don't.
It's more advanced, the more.
Yeah, so there's three components of asphalt, there's asphalt teens and malteens, okay? So what this product does, this GSB eighty-eight, it, it's a rejuvenator, rejuvenating fog seal, so it adds malteens back to the pavement matrix. So not only does it seal it, it actually adds, uh, uh, malteens back into it, so it's improving the asphalt matrix. So it seals it, but it also is a rejuvenator, it adds back things that get stripped off through oxidation and weathering and everything else.
Okay.
So what you'll see, the only complaint I've gotten about this is when you just do this, they'll do a little sand top dressing to provide a little bit of friction, but the sand doesn't get embedded in it, it, it gets swept away with traffic. Like, when you first drive on a new HMA road and you get that first rain on it, you'll notice it's really slick, because you get the oil and the stuff that's kind of on the surface, well, you'll get the same kind of thing when the fog seals down, because the water's not seeping into the pavement, and you got this rejuvenating malteen base that's on the surface that before it kind of works into the, it has to actually kind of gradually work into the surface, so. It'll be slick right after you do it, kind of, so.
But it's dry, you can dry on it right away, or?
It, it has to, it has to break, the emulsion has to break, but it'll be so it'll do, they'll do one lane at a time, it'll spray a lane and probably take, depending on the weather, could take thirty minutes, could take a couple hours, and then they'll open traffic on it through the other lane and then repaint the, the traffic markings.
I asked about it here a couple of months ago, because I drove it, and I just, I thought it was amazing, I just thought it looked like it leveled everything again and everything was totally.
It won't level anything, but when you're doing this at one to three years, you shouldn't have wheel path rust.
Right, right. But you do have cracks.
Yeah.
So I would consider that similar, I mean, just kind of thinking in my head to how you treat like leather. You know, you gotta treat it to maintain it, and that's kind of what this is doing.
So you think about asphalt, you know, uh, depending on the traffic level, asphalt payments are gonna oxidize and wear as much through the environment and weather than there will traffic. Now, the really high ADT, that's gonna wear through traffic, but a lot of these roads that are lower ADT, it's a combination of weather and environment and traffic that cause the pavement to age.
So is this going on for a bit, is that what you're saying?
That, I'll make a motion to.
Yeah, it goes for letting, yes.
Motion and second, approve the final, um, letting for the fog seal on Z fifteen, three hundred and sixty seventh Avenue, three hundred and sixty second Avenue, did I say so? All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, um, so the sharing agreement for Alex Davis, uh, been a long time coming here, uh, lead us to say there's been some revisions that Buchanan County has kind of worked through, um, so they set an agreement, I think what you looked at, I made one change to it based on another email we got. So they have the hourly, hourly rating here, and we're paying based on the hours he's worked, so that was the main change and one to make, we didn't want to start, we didn't want to pay a certain percentage every quarter, because it's hard to track, and if we're not getting it, then we have to adjust in the second quarter and the fourth quarter, and, and depending on, and I think now, now that we're fully staffed, what we need Alex to do is really is gonna taper, so we're not gonna get our whatever percentage, so we just went pure hourly, so that's in there. Um, they had set, uh, a maximum of twenty-five hundred dollars, I think that was a mistake. Now they wanted to correct that, I've taken that out, it was, uh, so on the contract sum, it says, this is the old version now, said Jackson County shall pay Buchanan County at an hourly rate of seventy-five dollars per hour for work performed under this contract, with a total sum for work performed not to exceed twenty-five hundred dollars in return for bridge inspection services and design services. So what I changed was, Jackson County shall pay Buchanan County at an hour rate of seventy dollars, seventy-five dollars per hour for work performed under this contract, comma, in return for bridge inspection services and design services.
So they're not a total.
So there's no, not a max total.
Oh, I may agree to that.
I'm gonna say, in order to expedite things, I'm gonna ask that you guys approve this based on what the revised version I just said, and if they come back with something different, then we'll adjust it, but this is already taking way longer, I mean, we started this conversation in August, trying to get this done, I mean, it's frigging December, so.
Right now, we need to motion to rescind the original, the original agreement.
Um, so we need to, we need to do both, we need to, a motion to, uh, basically a motion to authorize me to notify them to, we want to terminate the existing agreement, because that's what it says in the language, and then approve this revised, or this new agreement.
I make a motion to authorize you to send the termination notice.
Okay, great, yep.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the termination with Buchanan County Engineer as the previous agreed to, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Make a motion to approve the
Oppose. Motion carried.
Then I make a motion to approve the new agreement as revised and recommended.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second to approve the agreement with Buchanan County Engineer Services as presented, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. Um, so general items, uh, I'll be on vacation, let's get the first things through, so.
Always on vacation.
Always on vacation.
To approve that.
Six to eight months or so.
You come up work up here. You're on vacation every time you go work up here.
Something like that. So I, I'll be off, uh, starting Friday, and then I come back after the first, so. No, but I, I mean, I'll have my computer and everything, so it's not like people will be able to reach me, but phone might be a little difficult, so, uh, just letting you know. And then, uh, I did get formal notice, uh, the Traffic Safety Improvement Program application, you know, we applied for, for those, uh, lights, I got official notice that we were awarded a hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
You keep track of them awards on a yearly or basis of what we're awarded?
Yeah, I do, for Clint County. I, I think Jaden started one here, but basically, I, I keep track of all this extra money that I bring in to show that, like.
Doing your job.
You're worth it.
That, uh, I, I think in Clint County, I've already brought in forty-five years' worth of my salary of extra money, so. I work, I, I provide a positive fund balance based on the extra work, anyway.
So we appreciate that, applying for that also, because that's well.
You hear in the background?
Is it long enough, is it long enough?
All right, so anyway, that's good news.
Appreciated all the extra work you've done.
Well, you know, it's like anything else, you gotta ask, you know, what's the worst, you can always get turned out.
We appreciate all you do for us.
So on the raised grant, uh, we had our engineers conference, and I met with Nikki Stin, the secondary roads engineer, and I think I, I think I finally have it figured out, I shouldn't say that, I have a much better picture of how the funding will work, now this is for that, um, the big bridge, uh, iron ridge, iron bridge, iron road bridge, um, so that's roughly, um, gonna be about a five million dollar bridge. We're gonna get sixty percent of, and percent of that funded, now that could change based on estimates and the contingency. I do think, um, I do think we wanna apply for that bridge for the county funds. So when you, we got, there's two million dollars you can get for the state aid, federal aid, county bridge fund. Uh, that's the two million dollars we got for the Channelworth Bridge. So now we can make another application every year, I think we should do the iron bridge, and I'll put this together, but for two reasons, um, we're gonna need money to make up the funding gap of the, you know, about two and a half million dollars on the iron bridge, okay? This federal aid is only eighty percent of the project, okay? So, um, we're gonna have to come up with roughly a million dollars of local match, now that local match can be foreign to market funds, but that, if we use a hun- a million dollars of foreign market funds, we could potentially have to bump one of our road projects, understand what I mean? So we'd have to wait a year. If we get this, um, uh, s- county or state aid federally, two million dollars award like we did for Channelworth, five hundred thousand of that is considered road use tax, so there's five hundred thousand we can use as local match, so it only have to take five hundred thousand out of our FM account. So if that happens, then I feel pretty comfortable that we won't have to bump any road lettings, so that's why I propose that we, we use this iron bridge for our submittal for this year.
We still be five hundred thousand short, correct?
Yes. Now, that would happen.
Five million dollar bridge ahead.
Yeah, but sixty percent, and then you.
Yeah, so when, when we're talking these bigger projects, I mean, it, it, if we don't get other funding streams coming in, um, number one is can put a huge hit on our BR funds, and number two, um, the, the thing about the federal aid, I know I confused you guys, but if it's an off-system bridge, our, our county VR funds will fund it one hundred percent. If it's an on-system bridge, it's only eighty percent, so twenty percent has to come out of FM. So depending on whether the bridge is basically on a FM route or not, i- i- it could be a hundred percent funded if it's off-system. That's just the way the, that's just the way the, the transportation bill was set up, that's just the requirements in it, so. Um, I mean, there's a lot of moving pieces when the funding comes together, but I think in order to keep things moving forward and not have to hopefully delay anything, we use the iron bridge as our county state aid, federal aid application for this year, that gives us the best chance of having everything move forward and nothing has to get bumped, because we, we don't have the funding.
And that's a newer Morehead Bridge, or that's still. But Channelworth is awarded.
Yeah, so that would be, we would not, we would not submit for
Morehead.
Morehead, um, instead, Morehead was an option to do for this two million dollars, so I'm saying we do, like you're, I say we do iron bridge, just because it gives us the best chance, like I said, of not having to have anything bumped, and I don't think you guys want to start kicking in additional five hundred thousand of local funds to try and do the project.
Not if we don't have to, no.
Lisa, half million extra?
Uh, let me look that up.
I guess, uh, you know the ingredients better than we do, we, we trust that you're doing the best you can, Paul, and.
Do you need a motion on that?
Nope, I, uh.
For this information?
No, I'm, I'm all for it.
So I'll, I'll bring back, uh, I'll put together a little funding table, um, in the application, and then I'll just bring it to you guys, you, you guys don't need to approve the application like you would say for something else, but, and then, uh, last thing, we'll be sitting, the, the state, the DOT created a new sign grant application, um, we printed out the, so we can, what's the reimbursement schedules for every sign we replaced in two thousand and twenty-three that's eligible, so that'd be your regulatory stop signs, speed limit, weight limit, and warning signs are eligible, um, so we put it out to report, Stacy's working on filling out the spreadsheet, there's a maximum of a ten thousand dollars in that roll, and that's, that's a first come, first served deal, so we're gonna set it up so you can send in an email based on a time, so January second, at twelve oh one AM, we're gonna send in our application, actually, I should say twelve oh two, because Clint County sent it there, it's twelve.
Are you doing all this on vacation?
Where's your allegiance?
Uh?
You'd be back adversity or.
One minute difference, but, uh, no, so hopefully, I don't think that'll be.
This is to get the this is to get the more reflective.
No, it's just reimbursement, so any sign that we've replaced, um.
Just that point, I want to go on the record saying, I nearly came out with the requirement your signs have to be so reflective, and they're too reflective now, and you can't see what the dang sign says, because they're so bright, you lose the little black whatever in the middle, so it's actually becoming counterproductive.
In the daylight, you're talking about, yeah.
Hey, it would, well, your headlights at night, your headlights at it was like.
Oh, if they're wet sometimes, you mean?
No, just in general.
Really?
Yeah.
You need to go to the. Get under eighty, you need to go fifty-five instead of eighty.
I've seen it, like, in the nighttime, if they're wet, it, it kind of, it, to me, it kind of gives a glare, but, yeah, I've never s- you know, I've but I've seen, noticed that too, especially if they're wet, but my headlights aren't as bright as yours, you probably got a nicer car, I guess.
If you gave up some of your golf trips, you probably have.
Golf trips.
Thanks, Todd.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
All right, um. Well, can you have somebody check on, I was out touring, in around Eightieth Street and Four Hundredth, that intersection, or piling a bunch of logs on the road, like, they're like.
Somebody's piling ones.
Yes, yes, not, not us, I mean, but somebody is putting logs there, and they're in the right of way, and they're like almost on the road.
And this is at Eightieth Street and Fourth Avenue?
I believe it's Fourth Hundredth Avenue, yeah, it, the closest house number is like three, four, two, four, seven.
Say that again, three, four?
Ri- sorry, three, nine, two, four, seven, Eighty Second Street.
Eighty Second Street?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'll talk to you later about looking at it. I mean, typically, what we do, we've had this before, which we try to find out who the logger is and tell them, ask them how long they're gonna be there, because sometimes they're, they're for several weeks, and that's, you know.
I mean, like, there's some of these that, the way they're piled, they actually, I would say, might even stick into the.
Yeah, and they're not supposed to pile in the right of way.
Travel portion.
Yeah, okay, yeah, well.
Well, have a good vacation, and a good holiday too, then.
Yep, you guys too.
Yep. All right, are there any visitors or citizens in the room that would like to address the board this morning? If not, uh, Dean Engel with Together We Build. I see Matt here, is Dean coming to you?
Dean's out of state today.
I'm sorry.
Dean is out of state today, so Amber and I are here.
All right, so we have Amber, decent, and Todd Jen, and Mr. Matt's back, do you want to come forward? So I understand you had a meeting last night?
We did.
Did everything ironed out?
I believe so, forward progress. We got the, the Together We Build Board has been formally formed. Artists over in corporation filed, uh, the board is in place, officers elected. So we have the entity in place that we need to proceed with the revolving loan fund, loan.
Okay, there was some, so did you have some questions on some verbiage in here?
Just, was there some of the verbiage change in the promissory note, Dean, where contact did you?
Correct, so there was one error from the one I had sent out late on Friday. I'd missed, because originally we were gonna do two years, and they requested four, and I had missed in that promissory note, changing it from a two to a four, so that has been updated, and then also their bylaws do require that the president and treasurer both sign mortgage docs, so there was mine added to the promissory note for the treasurer to sign as well as the president.
Okay.
And this is just for disbursement, this one was already approved back in this way.
May of two thousand and twenty.
So do we have to, um, take action on the loan request again? Did we already do that?
I would say since it's on the agenda and it went to four years.
Okay.
I would.
Okay. We're doing both then separate.
I'll make a motion to approve the revolving loan fund request for four years.
Second.
I got motion and a second to approve the recommendation for revolving loans fund to Together We Build as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carried. And now we need to approve the transfer agreement from the revolving loan fund.
I will make that motion to approve the transfer agreement from the revolving loan fund to Together We Build Inc.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the transfer agreement from revolving loan fund to Together We Build Inc. as presented, all those in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And Will said you'd be in later today to sign, and Jaden will be in after that, or.
And what are, how's our things looking down there, Amber, I haven't been there for a couple of weeks, but.
Good, we painted yesterday, a couple accent walls, and the black, yeah, I did. Yeah, and my mother-in-law, my mother-in-law really did it, so. I rolled a little bit, and then we have the doors in, um, the epoxy should be finished later, the, or started again um, later this week, um, and then after epoxy, then the plumbing, all the bathroom fixtures, all that can start going in, um, and then flooring.
Ceiling tiles.
Ceiling tiles, yeah, yeah, so.
Got to wrap up kind of the kitchen.
Yeah, we have to order the kitchen equipment, we're waiting on quotes for that still, so, but yeah.
The dream hope is sometime meant to end January.
Yes, yes, we have to get that, once we get occupancy, then we can start hosting things in there, and then we can start looking at moving, so, but yeah.
Do these have to be redone from the originals, or are these?
That's the new, that's a new.
So the original people who ordered bricks will still get, we're just gonna transfer them into tiles.
Okay.
So still, you, we honor that pricing, because actually you got a better deal when you had the brick order. So pricing's all the same, we'll just, so if you ordered a twelve by twelve brick, it'll be a twelve by twelve tile. And we'll get in touch with people eventually, because like the logos and maybe all that kind of stuff.
Step art, whatever, maybe.
There'll be one more iteration to that, I believe, when there's online ordering.
Yeah, a little bit of online ordering, so.
But otherwise, that's.
Yeah, we painted the wall that they're gonna be put, you know, hung on, and so. Yeah, it's starting to look like a real building, you guys.
Good tears today, Matt.
You know, John had a problem with that black wall, you could always put a little old gold stripe on the bottom, just.
Well, Hawkeye colors, no. We just had to keep digging it with himself. He was adamant that we, we didn't paint that wall black, I don't know why, but.
Well, we appreciate the effort and the time you guys put in, and, uh, what you're doing there, that's a really nice facility, and we hope it works out the best for you, maybe get you out of the dungeon here or something.
It's the lower level, I was informed the other day, we kept saying we're in the basement, but we should be, it's the lower level.
It's a dungeon.
We're excited, we are excited, so.
I appreciate all your support.
Yeah, you know, I mean, again, pat yourselves on the back if you're unblung enough, because I, all you went through in the last four, five years, six years, whatever it is, is.
A lot of hard work put in, but it'll be worth it, so, but yes, yes.
And we thank the community also for their support.
Yep.
Couldn't have been done without.
Yeah.
I relay that message sometimes at our state, state meetings, that we have a building, a over three million dollar building that was donated, we said, donated from who? Everybody here.
A lot of people.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
And Matt, we can get you a tile if you'd like.
Yeah, yeah, we said, I haven't seen the sheets.
We'll give you one. We should be in the building too, we like, we do like to show it off, so.
For those watching at home, if you're curious about the tiles or interested in achieving or maybe supporting, uh, get with anybody that's on Together We Build, contact myself, um, or anybody, we'd be glad to hook you up to, uh, to garner the support, because, uh, it will be a nice thing to have it finished.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday, you guys.
Yes.
Drive fast, take Kansas, Matt. Have a good holiday, team.
They're gonna come to Lisa to sign that, or?
Yes.
Will it be at your office, Lisa?
The promissory note.
The promissory note.
Yes, yes.
For Will and James.
Okay, we'll, we'll send them.
Yep.
We'll do it.
Okay, very good, thank you. So they should all be signed by the end of the day.
Okay. Uh, Brianna, our Jackson County Veterans Affairs Administrator, good morning.
Good morning.
You have a little fence up over there, and you're
I've got that.
Don't be jumping off the wall anymore, we watched, watching the canvas.
People jump off the wall. All right, just a quick update this morning. Um, for the month of November, we filed a total of thirty-seven claims. Twenty-three of those were newer supplemental DIC healthcare or burial claims. Fifteen were either supporting documentation, requested information, or an intent to file. We had thirteen claims decided, so there's currently one hundred and fourteen open claims for Jackson County.
Is that normal?
It's a lot of open claims.
Sounds like it.
We file a lot of them.
How long does it make them, make them, how long does it take them to make up their mind? Yeah.
It really, it really depends.
Back in August, that really opened up a lot of different things, and kind of made them.
Or claims, you mean?
Yeah, so they're, they're pretty far behind still. Um, there's a big influx of. Yeah.
Claims throughout the United States.
Yeah, and depending on how many things are on the claim that people are, you know, going for, they claim go slower. Um, so we still have not received any figures, monetary figures, from the state for the month of October, and they had some sort of glitch where they can't pull reports yet, so they're working on it. Um, update for homebase Iowa, we have ordered the road signs for the major highways coming into the county, and we are continuing to plan our dedication ceremony for the spring.
Oh. Just because we just talked about signs, I wonder if they would cover under secondary road stuff? Cause we just got a grant for ten thousand dollars of paper reimbursed, I guess that would be something different.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I think has where traffic had to be trapped.
Yeah.
And now, do you know, do we have to get a permit from the state DOT to?
Yes, so they sent an email off to put me in contact with somebody, but I haven't heard yet, so.
If.
Yeah, they, they have to approve them before.
Need some assistance with that, I would go to the engineer's office and ask them, because they work a lot.
Yeah.
And Todd's in constant contact with them as far as things like that.
Okay, good to know, thank you. Uh, legislation was recently passed that opened eligibility to VA healthcare for World War Two veterans, regardless of their length of service and income. However, they may still have copayments for medication, urgent care visits, or long-term care, depending on their eligibility and service connected rating. So.
A little late to the.
That's what we all said.
Because you, you think about it, you gotta be able to twenty to serve, and it's been eighty years.
Most of them are probably gonna need that long-term care.
The long-term care, yes.
Is that planned out there?
Yeah. That's right, um, so we just encourage any World War Two veterans that are still out there to just call our office and we'll help them fill out the forms and things.
Or have your grandchildren call.
Yes.
But thank you for all who served.
Yes, absolutely. Um, office updates, Debbie and I recently took our annual recertification exam for our national accreditation and we both passed. Thanks. Um, and for the week of Christmas, our office will only be open on Wednesday and Thursday, so the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth.
Okay.
All righty, that's all I have.
Well, appreciate it. Um, again, yeah, it may matter relate to your employees, we've had some issues with the wall, that's why the fence is up.
Yeah.
You know, we're not really happy about claims that come in and then it affects all of our. Rates, so.
Sure, yeah, understood.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely, you guys have a wonderful.
You have a good holiday season. Just about tall enough to hit your head.
Just, just about that way there. I'll build on today.
Have a good holiday.
You too.
Yeah. Um, is this changed then, Lori is not till twenty-sixth?
No, Nathan is not till twenty-sixth.
Oh, Nathan twenty-sixth.
We had too many time conflicts this morning.
Okay, Lisa, are you prepared?
This morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three board meetings, as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Agreed.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the minutes of December twelfth, twenty-three board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and publication, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, carry.
Um, before I approve the claims, um, I would like to discuss the one that you questioned today, we did go back and look at the. Bid that both of those companies had submitted. Um, the bill that was submitted is different than what you approved. So I don't know how you wanna handle that, um.
Uh, maybe we can take a recess, make a phone call or something, to the, before we do that.
It's up to you, but I'm just saying that what was submitted and what he bid are two.
Well, we can constantly, you know, have bids put out there and, and approve the low bid and then the bid, and the bill comes in higher, so that doesn't work out very well. So let's not do that till.
Okay, so then I guess, would you like me to continue or would you like?
And is there any other portion here that you can move on to, other than?
No, I mean, I have other, I mean, I have other items on my agenda.
Um, up to you, I think we can wait, Lori's here now.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
Alright.
I'll be sure if they let me.
No, it's all good.
Oh, we will.
Okay.
Good morning, uh, Lori Rollins, Jackson County Zoning Administrator, um, to discuss department issues.
Okay, um, we had sent a rec, an extension request to you guys up in Leisure Lake. And, uh, a property that was asking for an additional extension. We were up there and we sent you pictures, we could see where numerous vehicles had actually been removed from the property. So, and there's a lot still, um.
Well, we sure lined up a little bit, they ain't crisscrossing, sitting on top of each other, but, uh.
Just the grass that.
Well, that still needs to be gone.
It's slow with the last picture.
Yeah, that was the picture that we, uh, when we, but yeah, so I would really encourage, um.
Coming December.
There was that one snowstorm and, yeah.
Storm.
Well, excuse me, excuse me, one snow event. Yeah, that one snow event, um, so I.
Well, I think we're all three on the motion, on the notion that if there's improvement, we see visual improvement.
Yeah.
And it don't stop.
Right.
You know, I know the weather's gonna kick them in the tail, but.
It will.
Um, we need to see improvement, I, we have seen some improvement. Yeah, mostly. That makes our roads lock.
I'd make a motion to approve the extension for the thirty days.
Okay, till January thirty-first?
Yes.
Agreed.
Motion a second to approve the extension nuisance violation extension as presented is.
Lions.
It's lions.
The only one that I have up there that has the, um, I just grabbed my notes, I'll get you the first name.
Okay.
It's in there. Did you have it?
What?
Do you have your emails from yesterday?
No, I texted.
Give the name and the actual address, so.
Okay, we had a motion a second to approve the, uh, nuisance violation extension as presented, uh, name will be provided, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
And just to bring you up to date, we did have a commission meeting, zoning commission meeting last night, um. They are working so hard, you guys, uh, and everything we're throwing at them is.
Who's they, Leisure Lake Commissioner?
No, our zoning commission.
Oh, yeah.
We had a zoning commission meeting last night, they're working very hard on the comprehensive plant, the wind energy conversion system. Ordinance, and I mean, it's all dry as a bone, all of it, um, but they are trudging through it, um, they got their rules of procedure. Re, relooked at and hammered out, and I think we have it right this time. Um, and I'd let them know some of the other things that are gonna be coming their way in the next month. So, that we're gonna be trying to start looking at.
Well, we sure, certainly appreciate their time and effort, uh, I know the pay is good. Um, so, yeah, well, I mean, that's something that we just fortunately have to do.
Yeah.
And we sure appreciate the time and effort they're putting in it to read through it.
Yeah, and I can't tell you.
When you send somebody a hundred pages, you know, it's like, really?
Uh-huh, I know, and I can't, I wanna thank you guys, because this is stuff that's been deferred for years. And we're finally doing it now, and, you know, it's all coming together at one time, but it's something that should have been. Happening over the years, never happened, but at least you guys are addressing it and it's gonna happen, thank you.
Appreciate your effort.
All right, you too.
Have a wonderful holiday season.
Okay, and I'm gonna join you guys next Tuesday by Zoom.
Okay.
Cause I'll have stuff for you, but I don't think I'll make it in.
You know that already.
I have, I have time, I have to get off the, off the rolls, or I'm gonna get fussed and I. But no, I will.
Have to take it.
Well.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a good holiday.
Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, Lisa, do we wanna take a brief recess? Oh, yeah. So, we could go ahead and proceed, if you have, uh, an answer to it?
Uh, he says he had to take out a little bit more than he initially thought because of the way the slope and stuff was. And it was a lot more of a challenge to not, to get all that out of there and not tear up the parking lot, so.
Did he talk to anybody before he did it?
I would say when they're down there working, that, that's pretty tough, but, yeah, um. I guess a little before we were gonna have to, um, disclose that this is what we want done, and I think we did that. So, if this is what the bid is, this is what the bid is. I certainly understand that you're running into conflicts and. Procedures.
So the amount of my claims does include the extra money above the bid. So if you're willing to, I need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing the amount of eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Almost.
Second.
The motion a second for the yard's office to issue warrants is publicated as eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and sixty-two cents, and to note there was. November payments to the law center, is that correct?
And then Together We Build.
Together We Build and Law Center to construction.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of claims.
A lot of, a lot of claims, yes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to accept and place and file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for the November eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Agreed.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for November eighth, twenty twenty-three as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve and authorize the chair signature of the Macoka Municipal Electric Utility. Contribution in aid of construction agreement regarding the electrical, the main transformer installation. At the Jackson County Fair and ISU Extension, the Four H Outreach Center.
Agreed.
Second. Motion a second to approve the chair's signature in agreement with Macoka Municipal Electric Utility as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve invoices for seven three thousand, four hundred and six dollars and ninety-five cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, Inc. Seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-four cents to Bill Bruce Builders. Sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and five dollars and eighty-four cents to Carl's Plumbing and Heating. A hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and twenty-five cents to Geesler Brothers. Thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents to Rock River Electric. Nineteen thousand to Midwest Fire Sprinkler, five hundred dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty. Twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents to Gerordi Welding and Fabrication, Inc. Six hundred and seventy-five dollars to B L B Communications. One thousand, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-four cents to Joel Wood Plumbing and Construction LLC. One thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and thirty cents to AT Disposal. For total cost of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty-two cents. And authorize the chair's signature on the project cost recap for the law enforcement center for the month ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Agreed.
Very.
Motion a second to approve the invoices as presented and signature, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve invoices for four thousand dollars to S A Architects, seven thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-eight cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, Inc. Fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and ninety-four cents to Peak Construction. Twenty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents to Crawford Company. Fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars to Stickley Electric, three thousand, seven hundred and five dollars to Midwest Auto Fire Sprinkler. Two hundred and fifty dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty. Twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-six, forty-two cents to Macoka Municipal Electric Utility. Seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and twelve cents to Shearer Trucking and Excavating. Six hundred and seventy-five dollars to B L B Communications. Eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents to K E Flatwork, Inc. Three hundred and seventy-five dollars to AT Disposal, for total cost of a hundred and forty-seven thousand, sixty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. And authorize the chair's signature on the project cost recap for the Jackson County Fair and ISU Extension. The Four H Outreach Center for the month ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Agreed.
Second.
Motion a second to approve the invoices, a signature for the Jackson County Fair and ISU Extension Center as presented. Is there any further conversation? So, I guess my question is, so the architects, do they get paid in increments instead of, so we architected this, we're not changing anything, so this.
That's just incremental.
Incremental.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board.
Thank you very much. And you have a good holiday.
Thank you.
And, Luwern?
Good morning. All right, calendar this week, um, this afternoon at five o'clock is the Conservation Board meeting in Hurstville. And then usually goes to those, but there for any of you that want to go. Thursday from nine to twelve, we will have a budget work session in here. And at six o'clock that night, there's a limestone bluffs R C and D meeting by Zoom for Don.
That was actually.
Okay, Friday, December twenty-second. From eleven to one P M is the Jackson County Holiday Celebration, uh, within the building. I will actually be out that day, I have thirty people coming for Christmas on Saturday, so I will be out on Friday, um, but. Just come in and cruise from office to office and see what kind of goodies they have. Um, since we are coming up on Christmas, Monday, December twenty-fifth, uh, the courthouse will be closed. On Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, the courthouse will be open except for the court and state offices, they got an extra day off. Um, on the twenty-sixth, then, and we will be having our next regular meeting on that day starting at nine o'clock. And I think that's all I have for the calendar, I did, um, ask all of you about. On Tuesday, January sixteenth, the union negotiating session, and I think Mike and Lynn did that be fine with them, so, okay.
Those are sixteenth, right?
The sixteenth of January.
Well, it'll take them a while to come back too, I don't know.
It did, and then, and then, um. Becky thought about the ninth, and she said she wasn't gonna be here on the night, so she, she moved to the sixteenth, so she's been having trouble getting him on, committing the date, so. That'll be two hours, hopefully we can get it done in that time, so.
Okay, we'll give it a whirl.
All right, that's all I have for you.
Appreciate it, thank you, you have a good holiday season.
Thank you.
And are there any reports or, um, on boards or commission reports that anybody would like to present?
Um, like. Excuse me. Um. I had something going in my throat here, we did have the W M A last Tuesday, everything's going, we just kind of awarded another fifteen thousand dollar grant, so, um, we're getting that squared away. Um. It's kind of the slower, slower time of the year, you know, we usually are doing our water sampling and things like that, so. We're still negotiating with, uh, the limestone bluffs as far as the, uh, executive director, the, the fiscal agent reports, or, uh. Contracts that should be ironed out hopefully next month, and, uh. We had the Together We Build, we established the advisory committee last night to get the ball rolling on that, so we could get the three hundred thousand taken care of. Um, they, like I said, they approved everything, um, the, the president will be Will Cornelius, vice president's Katie Boeb, uh, secretary Sawyer. And, uh, Embers.
Enders.
Enders, and, uh, Treasury Jaden Plagueo, and they're establishing a bank account, I think, as we speak this morning, so the money has somewhere to go. Um, cause they selected where it was gonna go and all that kinda stuff, so, um. Everything's going along with that.
Good.
Can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you need to be officially appointed to the board, would be my opinion.
We, we appointed our. Two elected, but we never appointed our supervisor person to the board.
Okay, I assumed that that was done to the board down there, so we have to.
We never appointed them.
But according to what I read, was that you as a board represented the two people which you did, Will and Katie, but then there is also a representative from the board of supervisors. On this board, which we know now is Don, but it's never been officially.
Maybe we should add that to next week's agenda.
Yeah.
So we need to have it on the agenda, so.
Yeah.
We know she's listening, so.
My, yes, yeah.
Yeah, well, we will do that. Appreciate it.
Unless you wanna just wait until you make all your board assignments in the first of the year, but it's, it's up to you, I'm just saying.
We can have it on the agenda, then we would be done with it.
Okay.
Um. I, I was a really nice email that we got yesterday, late yesterday, maybe, um, from. Department Natural Resources, maybe, Fish and Wildlife Services. So they were awarded, and we were down, uh, a month ago, our show talked to Kirk Keimer down there about a couple of different projects. Walked Levy, wa, looked at the breach and such, where it breached last time, um, they were talking about, how many acres was it, you remember? Hundred acres, eighty-eight, ninety acres that they're gonna flood next to the highway there. next to the highway there, and I, I don't know if you've been down there lately, but they cleared all.
That looks good, that looks good.
But then uh, they were awarded three hundred and ninety thousand dollars for this project, so um, Kurt has took a promotion and he's moving on to southeast Iowa for some little better position, so we thank him for that. And uh, Mr. McLehman, Nate, Nate McLehman will be taking Kurt's job, so. Yeah, they're working diligently down there in Green Island, and they said you can't imagine that the license plates you'll see in there and every given weekend fishing and hunting and whatnot, so.
It was impressive to see that feature.
It's, yeah, that breach was, I mean.
See it for person and then be like, we're actually standing here filming this, you're nuts.
Taking the pictures, that'd be. Cuckoo. Anyway, that's all the reports I have. John, did you need to approach the board yet?
Uh, yeah, just for payout or whatever.
Um, we approved uh, everything.
We said that.
So he's just showing some, uh, yeah, I have a couple of things that wanted to.
Sure.
You saved us some money?
I've saved money all over the place.
Excellent. Did I hear right that last week that our, I, I were gonna call the solar guys, but it's hooked up and running?
That's my understanding.
Nobody, everybody says, yeah, probably, but I don't hope so.
Uh, they, they came, I didn't touch Jeremy, but, but that's what their goal was, to start it up a week and a half ago.
Alright.
So Jeremy was working with me. So we had the Jackson County Fair project. Uh, which we met with them last night, that's kind of long, I hope to be done there by June twentieth. So if you wanna sign a yellow one, a white. Couple for Lisa, I do have a change order for there that we need to approve.
What's the change order?
Uh, it's for some epoxy repairs. Owner walked through that epoxy.
Um, we'll get some issues with that.
I thought they said that, uh, they said in the meeting last night that there was gonna be no charge for all this.
No charge for this, this was the prior epoxy that they walked through and had them repair, so. They, they started the epoxy flooring.
Yeah.
And Dean took somebody through the facility that was gonna be contributing to it and watching the whole three rooms, so I had to have it ground down and repaired, so this is part of that repair, the, the replacement, all the epoxy is gonna be under the general contractors.
So if we did have a repair, that would have been replaced.
Well, yeah, shouldn't have repaired it so quick, I guess. Would be our recommendation, I don't know what else we're gonna do, you know.
I guess my thought is, if you initially had it repaired, then the whole job ended up needing replaced, so you really gotta pay for the repair.
Was some part to begin with.
I, you know, that.
I thought of that.
You know, I just, I sat through the meetings last night, then you, you, that's, everybody said, yeah, they're repairing the goodness, they're repairing the epoxy, it's getting replaced, ground down, redone, and there is no cost to that, there's no charge to that.
To, to the contractors eating the entire cost of grinding that off and replacing it for that one. When I went to board initially on this one, you know, they're just starting to do the epoxy. And this was a change order to do the repairs.
So this was approved by the board that last month's meeting?
Yeah. Well, not by you.
No, the.
Together we build, yeah. There were.
I, I'm kind of with Don though, I'm questioning why are we paying for a change order on something that we said was subgraded to begin with?
Cause it wasn't done yet. It was just starting, and it was a timing issue. They were starting it, then they walked through it. Then they repaired it, and then when they finished, you know, two, three weeks later, we didn't accept it, so. I guess we, I understand, you know.
I'm, I'm, I want, if I can, I'd like to table this and get more clarity.
Okay.
Just because this doesn't make any sense, and I'd wanna talk to them and make sure, cause yeah, I get it, you know, as you're going through, you start, you see some hatty stuff that up. But then they complete the job, and the job is done to the point where it needs to be redone and it's being replaced.
Yeah.
This should be included.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
I mean, I got the contractor eating a whole damn, swallowing a whole can of camel as it is, bro.
And I'm sure I'll be going after.
Well, it was some part, that's for, that's for a reason, but.
Yeah, yeah, there's no doubt, but, you know, most people are gonna argue, oh, we just fixed that, but each fired again, totally brought it in different crews, but uh, if you wanna table it right now, I'll, I'll talk to, I'll talk to Chris and see what he says.
I have a motion and second to table the change order as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Second, opposed, motion carried.
Then, I don't know, I've never seen it.
It was for thirty-four, thirty-eight, seventy, or forty-five.
Oh, you want a copy of it?
Just how much the change order will move in, so.
There's a copy. So I think you're both at me last night, uh, just to bring Mike up to date there. They're looking at finishing up the project about January twentieth, when I wanted to turn it over and get it out of our hair. So, uh, they kept it fairly close to budget. I mean, amazingly enough. And uh, they're just buying out cabinets and stuff at this point, so and get the cabinets up and, and uh, so it, it's kind of a long time, I guess, did you have any questions regarding that project, so?
I don't think so, I toured it a couple weeks ago, and I thought they had a little ways to go yet.
Yeah.
Maybe things follow together a little quicker than I think, but uh,
They.
I've seen some grading being done by uh,
And P.
Yeah.
Well, yes, grading's been completed in uh, rocks in place now.
So there still needs to be some seeding and such done there too, correct?
Yes, they're gonna have to do some seeding at some point or something. Uh, it's not in the contract course, and we're not gonna get grass grow right now, but.
Yeah, no idea.
Need a little bit more black dirt, they have some other things, donations, a patio out front and stuff like that, that's not in the plans, but has come about since they've been marketing. So the marketing is what's bringing this other stuff together, I mean, it's you know as well as I do trying that, that building being built totally at, you know, almost totally out of donations and such, which is a tremendous feat, but a big pain in the butt too. So you're afraid to buy stuff up too quickly because you don't wanna run over budget. So that's why they're buying out cabinets, they're trying to get in-time donations, put something good up and stuff. So to maintain the budget on it, so it's kind of a complicated deal. Trying to get finished up, and the reason that you saw quite a bit out there, Mike, is cause I can't get the plumber in there cause the epoxy isn't down, you know, cause they're replacing it. And then the flakes came in, and they're the wrong flakes, so the guy had to order them again, so they're gonna be starting next week, but that crew that's coming in is supposed to be very good, and uh, they said they would be about a week, so that allowed the plumbing.
You say next week they were coming?
Yeah. So.
Short week.
Yeah. They, it won't take them long if they have a good sized crew, but I can't get the plumbing down until we get that.
Yeah.
So it's kind of got Shane held up, but uh.
Always something.
I tell you what, it's just pain in the butt these days, so. Anyways, uh, as far as the jail project, uh, had a couple of things that I wanted to run and ask you. I do have one change order for Kraus Plumbing. That's me, my current pay application.
These are the ones we just went through.
No, these are the jail.
Oh, well, we went through them too.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh yeah, you went through. So this change order is for uh, the change order three dash four of Kraus Plumbing. Uh, I extended the gas main into the laundry room for the commercial dryer. And uh, also, I just had them provide the gas connections to the steel building. Uh, at the meter and the furnace over at Steel Building, they, they had to, they, they're doing the connections anyways, so I just had them do it. That one, so it was six hundred and thirty-five dollars. So the total for the gas main extension and to provide gas connections at the meter and at the steel building were two thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars.
Two thousand, five hundred.
And seventeen dollars.
Is that normal, the meter, that whoever's supplying the utilities, uh, don't supply the meter?
Yes. Uh, typically, I try to avoid contractor overhead markup. And when you're bidding the project, Mike, you don't know what the pressure is, what you're gonna need for the size of the meter. Depending, you know, we have to work with the water company to determine the flow rates and stuff like that. So typically, you wanna avoid the seven to ten percent overhead markup for the purchase of the meter. So we buy it out directly for the owner. So, and uh, connections to the electrical meter, the electrical meter typically supplied in the, but uh, lo and behold, big for that too.
I've seen that.
Twenty-two thousand dollars, yeah. Yeah, well, they charged for the main, the wire bringing it in, and quite a bit, e- even for the Jackson County Fairgrounds, what it was, forty-six thousand. They did do a contribution to aim to the, like they did for the jail of, you know, twenty-three thousand or whatever, and then you assign them a green that which supposedly if the co-op makes money based on usage, that you'd get some, some of those funds back during the course of the five years.
Let's see that.
So. That answered your question, but.
Yeah, I just thought it was abnormal that they don't pay for the meter installation.
Uh, that was the connections to the meter that was on that change order. Like, is it here our recommendation that we go ahead and prove the change order? Unless there's further questions.
Wish you the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have motion and second to approve the change orders for, as for the Jackson County Law Enforcement Center as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Is there another one?
Yeah.
Same one though, right?
Yeah, just to back up, but, uh, the other thing I wanted to talk about is I'm getting a price for the kitchen equipment, and uh, I got a price back for Century Laundry. For the purchase of a commercial washer and dryer, uh, I wanted to bring it forward to board, I mean, this is something that we counted in when we were doing estimating. But uh, washer and dryer, it's an eighty-pound dryer and a, a forty-pound washer is uh, gonna be in the range of fifteen thousand uh, two hundred dollars installed, fifteen-six installed. Uh, like, to go ahead and get that purchase before the end of the year so that we don't.
And where's that coming out of?
That's both, or just the dryer?
That's both, washer and, the commercial washer and dryer.
Where's that coming out of?
Uh, the project, but uh, it was estimated in when we were doing estimates for
Yeah.
what we had to do on the mezzanine.
Where's your product coming from?
Uh, Century Laundry Distributing.
If I remember right.
Ayawata.
Or, dude, wasn't it kind of assumed it was budgeted at like twenty or twenty-two thousand?
Yeah, it was budgeted higher, yes, so. Uh, since I bought out two projects at the same time, as it would get a little bit better price for us, so.
Which prices compared to any of our local?
These are commercial washers and dryers, not residential.
Yeah, but our local can do commercials also.
Not just big. Uh, we did check with them, and they, they had like three or four double stack and everything, so we're gonna get the residential washer and dryer from them, but they didn't have this type of unit. I, I got it, we did get a price from them, Andrew and uh, Frank got a price from them.
I think most of them approved.
Okay.
I'm second it.
I have motion and second to approve ordering.
Yeah, purchase of the commercial washer.
It's plugged, I have it installed, and it is installed.
As it's installed.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
I need to know more information, John, after the.
Yeah, I can understand.
Okay.
I brought the extra.
Okay. Thank you.
It'll be fifteen-six would uh, install.
This is free pay?
No, we're not.
Okay.
I'll take care of that.
Okay.
And uh.
Okay, so this, this says fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-one.
Yeah, fifteen hundred dollars installed. So thirteen-six, let's go even. Uh, I did get a price, they have that wood painted on the garage that uh, trim wood, and I'm trying to see if we can get some tieback and coil stock on there. I think it's gonna benefit you in the future, you know, for maintenance, I mean, we can paint it. But I got priced with steel on it, it was way out of whack, and I go.
Where are we at? On what?
There's wood trim around the perimeter of the garage doors.
Of the utility building?
No, of the jail vehicles out.
So that's not covered in aluminum?
It's, it's painted right now. Or it's supposed to be painted, and I don't think paint's gonna hold.
So don't, normally that gets covered in flashing, like aluminum, you bend it, put it on there?
You can put coil stock on it, if it's treated lumber, you have to tie back over it or something, cause uh, aluminum will react with the
Traded?
Traded, but I just, I, I've never had any luck with paint holding the treated lumber for very long. So I'm just examining.
I'm surprised that that wasn't supposed to be covered and encocked. I haven't seen any.
A lot of times if it's uh, construction grade like it was on the steel building, they, they have to cover it, you know?
Mm-hmm.
But uh, this, I, I checked the details and it's not covered, it's painted, so. I just look into it for you.
Yeah.
Other than that.
I don't understand the whole idea, get some used and treated, and you could have just used regular lumber and covered it.
And I disagree with that.
Yeah.
Or if you're gonna paint it.
Well.
Yeah, you know, paint it after, be regular construction grade.
So is that in the architect work of it, or is that in?
I didn't draw the drawings, but I. Well, we'll see what we can do on it and uh.
The epoxy floor. Text them, they said, yeah, that's true, if somebody did a tour on Sunday and walked across the epoxy and that's what it is, that's currently.
I wouldn't lead you guys astray, I just, I, I know, it was like I said, it was an unfortunate mistake, and then. I just, I, I know, it was like I said, it was an unfortunate mistake, and then.
Well, there's no coat up or ropes or nothing to say, do not enter until.
Nothing was taped off or anything, and they did, and next day they came back and they're.
That, that area wasn't taped off and.
There was an assumption nobody would throw it on the weekend.
Yeah, there you go, assuming.
There's keys to the building, I would guess.
Uh, they had, it was locked. But uh. Being head code. It was just a mistake and, but when you're sticking to the floor, you ought to back up.
We didn't move on there, right?
Yes.
But hopefully it was a better.
Um. Yeah, I, I don't care. I mean, I, I, I assume that we're gonna have to pay it. I mean, it was, wasn't there a fake, of course?
So if you get back, I would make that's not even approved, that change order.
You still have it there?
Yeah, I do.
I'm second by.
Motion second to approve the change order for the epoxy. As presented. Although in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? It's been carried.
Just saying to remind you the one you reached. They do have all the line sets set for the BRF system, so they're bringing in techs and. To start up that heating system in front. It's now painted with one coat of paint and they're starting to. Put devices in and stuff up in the admin area and then. Pushing along is the best we can give them. Are there any other questions for me?
Oh, they're coming along as projected.
Uh.
The upper mezzanine and whatnot?
The masons are on the upper mezzanine now, so uh. They're supposed to be done with the upper mezzanine blockwork by next week. That's coming along, uh, the stairs and railings are. Sitting on site waiting to go in. Been working with the epoxy. Contractor and such. So things are moving along pretty well. I anticipate it'll be through February, or in March, I'm projecting.
So. Okay, well, we appreciate it, and I know it's a. Thing can be a struggle once in a while. Keep everything in order and everybody in order.
That would.
Gotta be a telling task.
Uh, yeah. Well, if I don't see it all before Christmas.
Yeah, the holiday season and uh, stay safe and.
Yep.
Wherever you're going, so somewhere or what?
I was down on the board last night, I said uh. And my wife said, oh, your daughter Paige is gonna be home Friday, I said, well, next Friday, right? I thought Christmas was next week, yeah, so. I'm a little bit behind the eight ball, yeah, so. Might have to do some shopping.
Christmas isn't next week, it's next Monday.
Uh, you know, it's this week, I thought it was the.
I think you have change orders to the together we build, or?
No, I have not emailed it to you.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
All right.
So you mentioned that. Change order, is, is that added on there, the uh, installation, or is that the current bill, or what is that?
This three thousand four hundred and fifty?
No, for the.
The, for the gas main?
Gas main. Oh, you're saying to Kraus Plumbing and Heating for the law enforcement.
No, I'm talking about the installation for the water and dryer. You said it was fourteen something.
Yeah, and then, and then he says fifteen hundred to install, so actually, when you look at it. If you take the fourteen thousand four hundred and. Thirty-one dollars, let's see, what was it, let me look. Fourteen thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Add the fifteen hundred on, it's actually comes up to fifteen thousand.
Six hundred.
Six hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Yeah.
So. So I just put in fifteen six, that's what. Yeah. So. You're approving that, but no, we haven't paid anything.
No, with the.
And I'm trying to get the installation down to a thousand dollars. So we approved the higher amount.
That installation is not on that current invoice.
It is not.
Okay.
No, and that's not an invoice, it's just a proposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I still have to order it, but. Everybody's anticipating January first, that we're gonna have increases in steel and everything else, so.
I thought it was going down. I think it was going down. That's what I heard.
De-inflation?
I don't think we're gonna see.
Come on, it's election year, gotta go down, don't it?
It's a little early for that. Thanks, Ben.
Anything else?
Thanks, have a good holiday.
Eat you. Eat you.
That's amazing, though, gas and building is on two seventy-five, two ninety-seven over here. How can I do that in twenty miles? Todd, would you like to approach the board again?
To win this.
Yeah.
I'm putting even.
Yeah. Sorry, down.
So I have my list to talk to you about the tree and brush. Uh, quotes that we got in, you know?
Yeah.
Uh. So, uh, coming to Donnie. We're gonna check with, was Eric the, the low bidder? But potentially. I guess one way to get. The entire scope of the work done. Would be if. We would have to change the contract we sent to was Eric, but. Potentially, we could say, change the contract. That says we would pay up to say. Uh. Like list a dollar amount, say a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of current budget. So whatever work, and he wants to start work now. Whatever work he gets done, we would pay up to a certain amount. And then whatever he does after the fact, if he gets it all done, we wouldn't issue payment for the remainder till after July one.
What was the total, if I remember correct?
Um. Well, it's, it's not total, but.
The four?
The four, there was sixty-two, six, a hundred and thirty-eight, five. Sixty-two, six, and thirty-nine, seven. Those rounded to the nearest one hundred dollars. What was the last one?
It's.
Thirty-nine, seven.
Three hundred thousand, you're done.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty roughly. So if we did a hundred and fifty. We would pay out of current fiscal and. Then potentially, so we can go over ten percent on any one budget category item, so under roadway maintenance. We got four point four eight three million, and we can go up to ten percent over that before we need to do a budget amendment. Um. So that's one option, we could get this done, pay for half of it out of current fiscal year. And then try and pay for the other half out of next fiscal.
So you have it in your current fiscal?
We don't, but we can allow to go, like I said, over ten percent on that budget category item.
Well, I drove them, and I tell you what, they're in dire need of it.
Well, I drove, I talked to Todd before this this morning, I said, is that just cleaning trees out, or is he doing the shrubs and the, the cedars and all, and it's everything? It's down trees too, if they're laying down, they gotta come out too. Yeah, so, I mean. It's some.
It's gonna be. It's, it'll be majorly good.
Well, it's fifty years gone by, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, but uh, they got neglected. Um, to me, a lot of them are liabilities to us.
Yeah. And a lot, I mean, go directly overhanging the road.
And just far from the road.
And if some, if part of it can be paid with some, you said, carryover funds or whatever, and then we can allow that, that addition in the budget for next year. It would be really identifying some, some, or rectifying some trouble spots on. Some of our roads, I think it would be. Plenty well spent. So what I'm proposing, I guess, is that I, we could, we could, we could edit the contract that we had initially, change the date. Say we could issue payment of up to a hundred fifty thousand of the work. Before July one, after July one would be the payment of the remainder.
And did you speak to him about this?
Yeah, well. Jay's calling him again just to verify, but he already said he wants to start now, he has no problem waiting to get paid, because that's what the contract said before.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the real question is. Won't come until after. Preferably closer to August.
Do you remember where they would start?
No, it doesn't really matter.
They'd be blocked almost, so correct?
Well, they have to keep the road open.
They do?
Yeah, that's, we're not.
Which some of them are this bigger.
Well, they're gonna have, they're gonna need to have some flaggers or whatever, just to, you know, while they're dropping some of those, because they're gonna. It's almost no way some of that stuff could come down without coming on. Yeah, so the real question is two things, one, do you want us to edit the contract and execute the contract? And if we do that, then we're on the hook for the remainder of a hundred fifty thousand for next fiscal.
I hear you. That's better than three hundred in the next fiscal.
Yeah.
So, what about, I guess my question is, what about fencing and stuff, if they destroy something?
So they're, they're. They're required to repair any damage they caused to adjacent property or reserve fencing. I would just say, I would have them take pictures before and after, because some of the fencing I saw along there was nice.
Well, some of it's growed into it, you ain't even gonna, yeah.
It's good, and we.
Well, I'm talking about something nicer than that.
Right, I'm just saying, they shouldn't be expected to put up a new fence, because the old rusty stuff got groved into the tree and came with it. So, so, I just, so there won't be no discrepancy. But uh.
I guess I like that idea. Um, to split it.
I do too.
There's sure maintenance that should be done.
It's maintenance that needs done and it.
Basically.
Get it done.
If you wanna swap it, you're talking a hundred and fifty, that you intended to spend on the lighting that we don't need to.
No.
No.
So we've already, nice try. But we already, I already budgeted for anticipating the income for the TSL grant. So it's a pass-through, it's expense, and we already budgeted for the money, nice try, no.
Yeah, well.
So, I, I'm in favor of you, if you wanna put it on next week's agenda or whatever, and we can officially approve it.
I mean, you can get a contract approved with him.
Yeah, so I'll talk, we'll edit the contract and we'll, we'll, we'll follow up with, was Eric, just to verify, and then uh. We'll, we'll, I mean, we'll get a contract, because I think he wants to start sooner than later, so. Um, we'll put it, we'll put it on for award, and then you guys can. We'll, we'll get it taken care of, so. Sounds good, alright, thank you.
Todd, what's the name of the company?
Wizeerik, Wizeerik, W I E. R O Z E K, I think, was Eric.
Where they from?
Do you think I know Eric? I don't know.
You know him?
No. Uh, I just have the name. W I E Z O R. E K Timber Company. We got, and then we got a bid from S two and Brandon Bird. Well.
For our debut. Let's say how you do.
I was gonna guess Dubuque. Yeah, you're a researcher, aren't you, a journalist, yeah?
Alright. Appreciate it.
Alright, thanks.
How's it going? Your sidekick here, Jack?
She is not coming.
Okay. Well, you've got the hot seat.
You're up.
Welcome aboard.
She called me this morning and said she forgot she had. Uh, a meeting with Robert Young's entertainer.
She finished him over there, can't give a damn.
Sounds good anyway.
That's it.
Okay, but we did have our um, uh. Eastern Iowa Mental Health Meeting yesterday, and um. Uh, the audit, we had our audit from uh. Uh, Baker Tilly, and he said it was a completely clean. Audit, um, there was no concerns. Um, it was extremely successful and working with David Farmer, um, always is, um. Quite an experience, and so he said everything was fine, no problems. And um, one of the things that uh. Uh, financial, uh, David talked to us about yesterday, because he is putting together some information about. Uh, finances, including per cost for service. And so we'll be getting that in the, in the near future. Um, we also, uh. Uh. Eagle View, which is the hospital that was built over in Bettendorf. About three years ago, um, we have not been able, we haven't been successful in getting any information from them as to. Um, the services they're providing. They did give them to us uh, this month, and it was in our packet. The services that they are providing, and they will continue to do that. Um. They were really slow getting started, mainly because they didn't have the staff to provide some of the services that we need. So, um, but now they have some of those uh, individuals on staff, and they're able to do more, more for us than. They've been able to do in the past, so it's a, a step in the right direction. A big portion of our meeting yesterday was on Challenge to Success. Um, that's the school program. And um. They have reached nineteen thousand two hundred and ninety-one students K through twelve. Um. They have nine schools in Cedar County, nine schools in Flinton County. Only two schools in Muscatine, and they have thirty schools that they're providing services to in Scott County. And there are six schools in Jackson County that are receiving the Challenge for Change. We had a team from Challenge of Change yesterday that was there, and they took us through some of the processes. Um, that they take, um. And it was, it was, it was really, it was very, very interesting, um. Uh, they also are offering training to people that wanna become a, a Challenge for Change instructor. And they said that they're, um, they had seventy signed up. For the next session. Um, they're currently twenty-nine trained, I guess, what she said, in Jackson County. That are able to go into the schools and help, help the kids.
So, they're identifying though, right? They're, the trainees are just identifying.
Yes.
The program is not succeeding what we identify yet, is that correct?
Right, right. But it is, um, one of the things they, they, one of the big things they talked about was their breathing exercise, and. They had this ball, and you had to expand the ball, and then you had to detract the ball, you had to expand it as you took your breath, and then you had to. Put it back together as you exhaled. And it was important that, she said, it's extremely important that when you are. Breathing, that you're breathing whole. And not just taking short little breaths, but um, the, they said the kids are just eating it up. Um, and it's, it's really, really been very successful. Um, we had a gentleman there who, um. I'm not sure what country he was from, but it was somebody that was very adept at yoga. And he was asking questions, and she said, well, we don't do the same type of yoga that you're referring to. And she said, and so she explained it all to him, and I think in the end he was okay with it. But he, he thought we were going in and teaching yoga to these kids, and, and we're just helping them get through the day. Um, they talked about, um. The waiting lists for people that are needing services, and we've talked about that in the past, that the waiting lists are just. The waiting. Period of time is just. Criminal. But she said that the waiting lists, um, they're putting together some tools to make the gap for students. Um, that are, at the present time, not even able to stay in school. Because they just cannot control them. So they're working on programs to help. Keep those kids in school, and um, she said. That um, it's been pretty successful so far, and they're continuing to do that, but they're also continuing to work with the Department. Of Health and Human Services to see what they can do to eliminate these long waits. Um. For people to receive services.
So my question is, Jack, do they also have some type of? Parental guidance?
Yes, they do, they have training for parents as well.
They can do with their children?
Yes, they do, they also provide that. Pardon?
That's where it initiates, though.
Yes, it absolutely is, it absolutely is that, and they're, they're working with those parents and, and faculty, and faculty are kind of. Um. Telling them what parents need some additional assistance, and they're working to, to provide some of that. Um, we did have, um. At the end of the meeting yesterday, um, uh, we had a program from uh. Um. Vera French. And there is. This sounds unbelievable, but there is a chair that they can purchase, and they have one at the present time. And it is a. It is a chair that, um, helps alleviate pain. And.
I will.
I was gonna say, what are you signing up?
Anyway, um, they have one chair at the present time, and it's a twenty-minute. Um, uh. Session. And they actually, he, the way he explained it, they sat in the chair, and they're kind of, um, uh. Held still. I don't know if they.
Oh, I can't do that.
Anyway, there is a device that they find through one of your fingers. Where that. Reaches in your brain. And they can actually take this device and shoot it into that very section of the brain. And um, they say that even after two treatments, it's just phenomenal, the change that, that it creates. But he wants to purchase a second chair, and there is. But he wants to purchase a second chair and there is funding through uh our. Carryover to purchase and he said that he had um gotten a quote. And this is half price that they're letting him have this for and it's seventy four thousand seven hundred dollars. And we couldn't take any action or discuss it really yesterday because it wasn't on the agenda. But it's something that the board is going to get some additional information and and look at. But they said some of the people that have been receiving this treatment, after they've had four or five treatments, they have no little pain.
They charged for this treatment?
No.
I think chiropractor office should have one of them, by the way.
Go for it. Um, we also uh talked about our ending balance um. Through the finances and um eighty percent of two hundred and twenty four's balance would be thirteen thou- thirteen million. Six hundred and thirty nine dollar and six hundred and thirty nine hundred seventy, seven seventy nine. And that would still put us thirty seven point seven percent over the five percent that we're supposed to be at. So we are uh trying to come up with some different uh programs that. And as we've said before, the main thing that we can't provide some of these programs is there's nobody to do the work. So we're still working on.
Well, it seems like that balance has almost increased, Jack.
It has increased because we haven't used, we we were allowed to carry some funds over that were designated funds. So we haven't been able to. Add those designated services, so that designated fund got added to the carryover.
By more charity.
Pardon?
So so is this gonna be in legislation again?
Well, um Lori's really concerned what the legislators are gonna do. I mean, we all know that the state is. Department of Human Services and Health and Human Services is looking at. Um, the various regions and trying to decide how they're gonna best serve the people. I did get a an email I was happy about. Did you get it from from Mary? That the governor did approve additional money for early childhood Iowa.
Yes.
So that's a plus, but we still are not, we still don't know what's gonna happen like to the seniors and to anybody else. Um, that report has not been summarized and sent out to those people that need to see it. So we don't know what's gonna happen with the the um. Mental health board um or our region, we we think we're safe, but we're not sure.
We need to follow up with that H N E I three A because I'm hearing through the grapevine that meals on wheels. Is kinda gonna be going away and going to, they get mailed frozen meals that they can just microwave kinda stuff and. Some people don't have microwaves and different things, so there's been a lot of concern rising with that, so.
Well, and they're, I mean, they're not serving any meals down here anymore.
Well, did she talk a couple of weeks ago here that they were correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Moms meals they were going.
Moms.
I don't think they're gonna be served at the center.
No, they won't be served.
I asked her when she was here and she said that people that were had issues, they were addressing them issues like finding them microwaves and. Things.
So was it Pat that was up at our meeting at? What's her name? Yeah, Donna. I mean, she was talking about doing some different things too.
One of the other things that Lori talked um uh considered about is um the number of people. In the jails in the five counties that are receiving services and um they've been receiving six months of worth of services. While they're in jail and then they can carry those services after and they're paying for all of the meds. That any of the prisoners are needing is coming from the mental health region. So the that's an expense that the jail used to have to pay, sheriff's departments used to have to pay, but. They don't have to pay that anymore.
So is that just a mental patient though, or is that all of them?
It is for meds, for mental patients.
For mental, just for the mental patients.
Mental health meds. Covers their blood pressure meds or any.
With the dental bills and.
No, you still have to pay to have a. Um, but we had um a total this last year, we served four thousand six hundred and forty one clients were served. In our five county region.
That's just mental health crimes? That's it, yeah. And that's not adolescent though either.
That that, no, that would be a separate, that would be a separate um number that Christine would have to share with us and he didn't, hasn't said what that was. Four thousand six hundred and forty one clients were served.
In our regions. And how's that compare to previous?
I would say it's pretty, pretty stable.
Yeah. Yeah, it's ever changing, you know, and I, you know, that balancing is has been an issue for years and years. Again, you don't just go spend money to spend it. You gotta be able to start a program and sustain it. So.
And they will not be, I mean, we won't get a payment in January. We probably will not get a pay uh the next, the second payment either. Um, so we'll just have to wait and see because we have to use up some of that carryover, which makes sense.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's your balances rising. I mean, yeah, that's gonna draw a red flag to anybody. Well, we appreciate it, Jack. There anything we can do. I know it's ongoing for you.
But, you know, the big thing is we make a huge difference.
Well, we hope so.
Yeah, we do.
I mean, that's what we're. Striving for is to make a difference and hopefully you can change somebody's life around.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's the whole goal. If it's if it's one or two, it's worth it, you know?
Amen, amen. Thank you.
So, yep, have a great holiday, Jack. Stay safe and happy and. Warm.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Okay, anything else before the board this morning?
Second bet.
And amongst her and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Ogen Carey, everyone have a safe and happy holiday.